These work sessions are an opportunity for council to receive information, also to discuss items of interest affecting the city. We don't vote in work session or do we take any items up to our regular meeting at seven o'clock? We will have a public comment after council's had a chance to discuss the item that we have in item one three. I also want to mention that Councilman Mike McPhee is out. He's on a scheduled vacation in Alaska and he will be back with us on our next meeting. With that, we're going to move to number two on the agenda, which is employee hire recognition. The community development department, I'll turn it over to Karen Freeze and introduce her to the talk.
We hired Allison McCarthy as our...
We have several people at home, did you?
Yep. We hired Allison McCarthy as our new permit tent, so she's the face of the department for any contractor, any citizens coming here.
Hi, I'm Allison McCarthy. Thank you for having me and introducing me.
Welcome, welcome.
I'm currently working on my masters in urban planning, so I'm really excited just to learn more in the community development.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next, the fire department, two of them, several people.
Yeah, good evening. We have four new hires introduced tonight. I'll start with Eric. I'll start with Eric. Eric comes to us as an experienced firefighter from Savannah. He's looking for a change of pace from Savannah area, so hopefully he'll fit the roles and better fit and move forward. And Amy, which also, you guys know the name, which is Erin, joined us from Calhoun County. Certified firefighter as well, and he just completed paramedic class and is waiting to take his final exam and certification's tested to be a paramedic with us. And Emmanuel was prior Marine Corps and has joined us to start our return, Buckland's recruit program. My dear, I believe, yes. And Maeve also, Maeve is from Midwest, has some family here in the Tawson area. She's also joined us for a primary school and high school class, so we'll have our four on board. In certified, let's welcome her.
Karen, how many staff? It's great to see you. It is my pleasure to introduce our new employee, it's Michael Daniel. He comes to us with great experience. He's been a law enforcement officer for many years and he is from our local area. We are so glad to have him and his experience.
Public works, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We have two new hires, one in the first department and one in general support. My mom Fred comes to us from New Jersey, comes down here, he has prior experience with landscaping. Spent most of his time just enjoying time with his daughter, and so we're glad to have him. He's been a big help since he came on. Alex, originally from Georgia, he came here, graduated high school here. Went to Marine Corps, came back, decided that he wanted to come and help all the works out. Enjoyed time with his wife and his two kids. We're glad to have both of them on. They've already started making big differences.
Now, I agree, discussion item of establishing a path for negotiations. State Harbor Marine Buford LLC is our lease and all operating agreement of standing down the ring.
Mayor Council, good evening. I don't have a prepared speech for this, I did draft a plan. I think it's a solid plan, but there's a lot of pride of offer shit next to the plan where I'm going to bite you on any part of it, except for the fact that I do believe we need to establish a negotiating committee. I mean, what the city position is before we really go to be a contract with State Harbor. So this lays out a process that will, that will get us there. It is, it is placed on your agenda for discussion, to discuss amongst yourselves. That's the reason it's the only thing on the agenda this evening. Of course, you may want to spend like a several amount of time on it. There are several components. One is to establish a negotiating committee. Again, to determine the position of the city prior to entering into the negotiations with State Harbor. And the other component is to put out a community survey to find out what does the city of Buford community residents, what do they want in their marina? What are you looking for in an agreement with someone that would manage our marina? And so while council is going through the process of selecting and appointing committee members to the, to the negotiating committee, this survey can be collecting data, and then when the negotiating committee is formed, then we've got some information that we can work out to the negotiating committee. This is what your community says about a marina. And so it's one more way of informing that negotiating committee as they begin deliberation amongst themselves. And so there's also a notional timeline here. By no means are these dates etched in stone. Again, this is what the process could look like, but it could look at a lot of other different ways too, and that's why I ran it cheap. It's a jumping off point for discussing how to want to move forward. You've dedicated an entire two, in the making negotiations with State Harbor. We have spoken with State Harbor previously, and I've reported in previous conversations that State Harbor is also willing to negotiate. And so now this is how we get to the next step. So with that, I will turn it over to council for discussion.
Okay, excuse me, before discussion, I want to recommend an alternative option to this because I like what you've laid out. But with the ad hoc negotiating committee, and I'm not sure if y'all have, y'all have any agendas they have?
Yes, yes, in that consideration.
Okay, I would like to, instead of an, on item number four, with the ad hoc negotiating committee, we said two council-appointed citizen representatives. I'd like to offer that each council member appoint one citizen to this board. And they would be the ones that review the lease, or go through the public survey, gather that data. They would prepare a report of recommendations, and we go forward to a negotiating team. And the two-tiered process is negotiating committee would then turn their party, the negotiator team, who I, in my mind, would be one more different council, Scott, JJ, the city attorney and the contract attorney. I think it's absolutely necessary. If we have a lawyer that's first in contractual law, we go to deliberate or sit down with State Harbor. So I'm gonna throw that out on the table as just a suggestion.
Just to make sure I understand you, this, with each, each council person appointing one person to the negotiating team?
Correct, this is ad hoc negotiating committee.
What definitely total two?
It does, but you can take out more to those others if you'd like. I'm just throwing this out for information. I think it'd be good because we get a diverse group of citizens, you get more citizen input, and I think that's where I'm managing.
My last idea, I'm just wanting to make sure.
Okay. So we can add or delete, I mean, that's, that's something council to discuss.
And those appointees would, or would surprise the negotiating?
They would comprise the negotiating committee, and they would be the ones that take the data from the survey.
Yes.
And they'd also sit down and go through the lease, and they'd come up with, I guess, some marching orders, if you will, or recommendations or a report to a negotiating team, which I said would be five people, Scott, JJ, somebody from city council, city attorney, who I think needs to be involved, plus the contractual attorney. Somebody who's good contract law background.
Five, six, seven, eight contract employees, or the contract lawyer, so that's eight, right?
No, that's just five.
But you have one from each council member, so that would be five.
No, no, I thought about this, there's two tiers. You have a negotiating, which is one you see in front of you here.
Okay.
Instead of two council-appointed citizen representatives, we have five. Okay? And then they are the ones that look at the lease, they're the ones that take the data from the survey, and they come up with a report or recommendations, however you want to call it. They give it to this negotiating team and say, okay, this is what we want out of this lease.
So and then two of those five would also be on the negotiating committee? Or is that totally separate?
That's totally so.
Okay.
We keep it five, and that's lawyers, the city manager, and one member of council.
I could see some value for maybe having an attorney on your negotiating committee.
I'd like to.
I thought we were my initial, but based on, it triggers some thoughts. If, you know, there's no negotiating committee to come up with something that's not feasible, contractually, in a legalistic sense, so if you have a contract attorney on your negotiating committee, that may, they help.
They can do both. Good.
Could the, could the city attorney be that legal person and be on both?
I, I would have to discuss that with, with Ben to see what his comfort level is with contractual law. It's possible. I just, I can't speak for him.
That's one of the special things to me, I think, needs to be involved. I agree.
Okay, so the ad hoc committee, just want to make sure I got you right. One representative from council. Go over this one, Ben, one more time. I just want to make sure we got it right.
You're gonna be a little... Well, we don't have to have all of you people on here, but if you go with what's there, one representative from city council, one from the historic district review board or designated, if you want that, that person. One from Buford County Council. Five council-appointed citizen representatives, and then the city manager who's executive or non. That's if you go with what's here. You want to add a contractual attorney, that makes an additional part.
So that is nice, that. I guess I'm not seeing that, that being two-tiered. I'm seeing that as that being the negotiating committee.
This is just the negotiating through the lease and the data. They turn over recommendations from that, that meeting with all these people. They have a negotiating team which includes a contract attorney.
To another negotiating.
Yeah, to the actual team who's going to sit down and say, oh. See what I mean?
Okay, so what I'm wondering, if you've got all the, if you got the council-appointed people, city man, do we really need somebody from city council on this particular one, since they're going to be on the next level?
You don't have to.
I'm thinking that, you know, I think that...
We don't need anybody from the historic district review board, does that matter?
That's what I'm saying, we can keep, we can trim it there because there may be representatives from the historic review board that we, one of us may designate.
Exactly.
So I think, I think we could cut it that way by getting those two out of there.
I didn't want to make it too large, but I wanted to give more citizen representation on the board.
We do need representation. That is a good way of doing it. I do it by that, but then we could cut the fat a little bit by taking off the city council and the historic review board off of that layer, but they'll be on the next layer.
Yeah, I knew I had a probably Scott's and contractual.
Exactly. Yeah, that would be very...
I guess I'm getting a little bit tangled up in the benefit of having two negotiating bodies. So I could see this one, if we massage the makeup of the ad hoc negotiating committee, that makes sense to me, especially in regards to adding more citizen representatives to it. I guess I just don't see the benefit of, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding it right, and understanding the responsibilities that that additional negotiating committee would have. But it, you basically have a negotiating committee that would review the survey results, right? And they would pick from the survey results, and then they would make recommendations from what came back from the survey to this ad hoc negotiating committee that would then work with State Harbor to establish a lease. Is that right?
No, that's not how I'm looking at it. I'm...
Another way around.
Yeah, this, this, this committee, this ad hoc committee, as stated in here right now, their purpose is to take the data from the survey and go through the lease, and then make a recommendation to Scott, JJ, the city attorney, the contract attorney, whatever, and a council member if you want him in there on the negotiating team, and sits down on State Harbor. I'm just throwing this out. It doesn't have to be either way.
Be a good way to make sure you first start out with citizens, if you're right. That's kind of where I see the benefit of that. And, and each council member will be represented, represented, they're all qualified, so I ask you to do it. That's okay, so I think that's a good way to lead into, first we start with the citizen input, and then they'll have the benefit of the survey, and then be maybe a little more professional-like persons when we're sitting down in front of State Harbor, to include that contract lawyer.
Because I don't know what they're going to have at the same one. I don't want to hold it on if you put all these people.
Yes, my understanding that this negotiating committee was a little bit different when I was reading this. I was reading it as you have a survey to collect results from the community, and then you have this negotiating committee to negotiate a lease. And I don't think that's the way that you were interpreting it, or...
Yeah, how I was interpreting is that they take the data and they go through the lease and call it together, so they figure out what they want to do.
Right.
Negotiating committee would, would establish the city's negotiating position, or positions. And then they would turn that information over to the person that will sit down with State Harbor. And I think that's the second tier that the mayor's done, if I got it right.
You're right.
I think that's the second tier he's talking about. I have concerns if it's five people, that's a lot of people.
If you cut it down, just throw that out there.
So, so this, this, this team that would actually do the negotiation would take the position that the negotiating committee established. And you may have people from the negotiating committee on it.
Yeah.
But they would take those positions forward to State Harbor and discussions. And then whatever counter would come back from the other side, they would bring back to the negotiating committee to discuss again, to, to figure out if we have a modified position, or we're at stalemate, or, or what we're doing. And then they would report that information back out to the person or, or persons that are going to interface with State Harbor again. That's, that's how I see it working. I know normally we hold, we ask for public input at the end.
We can do it.
But in this case, it may be beneficial to hear from some of our members if they've got some input for you. It may, it may spark some other ideas.
Good.
So if I could just respectfully make that suggestion.
Absolutely. I'll open it up, public comment. If you do, please stand up here and give the name and address, record. Anybody up there, please speak? Scott, I'm here.
I'm getting a phone call at the same time.
Yeah, I'll get you on the Facebook.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, just a quick question. On the survey, have you written the survey yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Because the survey that the city currently has on y'all's website, I sort of have a problem with it because it doesn't ask for your address. So it's open up to anybody who can fill out that survey, and they don't even have to be from Buford. And then also, so it's not a poll of citizens. And then the other thing is asking if I enjoyed the amenities, but State Harbor is a private club. I can't use the amenities down there. So in other words, I just kind of was wondering who's making up the survey?
Staff will put the survey together. But we have, we, we discussed some of those components and have some of the same concerns of how do we know whose citizens who aren't. And we're going to try to compartmentalize those responses.
Yes.
So we're going to do our best to try to capture it. In an electronic survey, it's difficult to be a hundred percent sure that the, that the data is, has integrity. But we're going to do our best to try to compartmentalize that. We recognize that as a concern also.
Because I think that's a major concern, because if I was State Harbor and I wanted just like push polls in politics.
Yeah.
It depends on do I survey what it says, and it depends on what I ask, what your results are. And so that's the only one I was bringing up, because it seems like a lot is hinging on the survey.
Right. And, and again, it will be on the negotiating committee to take a look at that data, and, and they're, they're allowed to question the data. If it doesn't look right, or if it looks like it's been, like you say, you know, somebody's pushed the button a bunch of times to get the same response for it, so. But it's, it's one more way of giving some additional input to this, to this committee.
Because I just didn't, that was a survey, since it was on the city side, I was thinking that was the survey.
No, that's, that's not the survey, no ma'am.
Catherine, if you can give me an address or record.
Okay, yes, one, two, oh, seven, base street.
Just for clarification, that survey speaks just to the, to the marina layout redesign only. It doesn't speak to terms of a contract or...
Oh, it doesn't at all, no. But that's why I was...
But that's what the large survey will encompass.
Because we're talking survey, survey, and the only survey I've seen is that one, and I just say, well, it doesn't even ask where I live. I could be a voter from those windows.
You're a hundred percent.
Yes, Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, I'm Rob Cahill, six oh eight Water Street. So one, I'm unclear if the current lease is null and void. Yes or no, not maybe? Because the language I hear is renegotiate, so if it is in fact null and void, it's not a renegotiation. It's a negotiation clean, tabula rasa. So I would really appreciate some clarification on that. Second, I think the two-tier approach has lots of, lots of advantages here. So you can get the citizen community input first, and then give it to the professionals that will sit across the table from State Harbor. And three, on the survey, the survey that I filled out is pretty much borderline useless. Like, I'm a decision maker, I can't see glean any information out of that survey that can help a decision maker make a decision, which is the purpose of feeding that forward. So I'd hope you get some professional expertise to design a survey, but people that have that is their, is their real expertise, and then get some data that can be used to make decisions, not just to get a pulse of what people like. Thank you.
My name is Paul Trask, six ten Bladen Street, speaking as a private citizen, a member of the planning commission. May I take that photo off the wall for just a moment, please?
This photo?
Yes. Let me put it, I won't break it. You want me to hook that? I won't break it. This is going to help me illustrate what I think is an important point. This is a photograph, and you can see the marina in the background here. I don't know what year this was taken, but the park appears to be recently constructed. The trees are very, very small, and the marina is, is not nearly what it is now today, but...
Can we see that?
So it's, it's, the marina is much smaller, and you can, you can see many photographs of the marina on the internet at various stages of time. So the reason I wanted to point that out is because the marina has evolved over a long period of time. It was, it was just a Savannah steamboat dock at one time, and then it's evolved into this marina. And this is really an important issue, and it deserves equal attention. You know, I remember attending Charettes for the Boundary Street Plan and Charettes for one thing or another, this reimagined Revo Road. There are all sorts of things. And so I think that first and foremost, we need a professional facilitator. Maybe it's a local firm. I'm not suggesting Buford Design Build. They did one for me probably a couple of years back. They were wonderful. So there, there, there are resources here in Buford, you know, or we can go outside of town. But you need to get everyone's ideas on a board and then reduce that. Instead of sending out a survey, you need to invite the public in over a weekend or whatever. And because this is a really important issue. And the citizens have never had an opportunity to really say what they want for their marina. If I lived in Mossy Oaks or Hundred Pines or Pigeon Point, I might want to have a say about what I'd like to see in my marina. And the vision for my marina may or may not be similar to what Safe Harbor is suggesting. Safe Harbor has a, a business model. They want to apply their business model. Everyone understands that. We, I, I think, I get the sense that city council feels some obligation to Safe Harbor perhaps. I don't know if we have an obligation to Safe Harbor. They're certainly a viable operator. They could put in a proposal which may or may not be accepted. I think, including historic Buford, the marina is right in the middle of our historic downtown. And I, I want to ask council, what is your vision? What is your vision for our downtown, for our historic district, our downtown? Safe Harbor came in last March with very grandiose, large plan. It was rejected. They've now come back with another plan that we saw last week downtown, which is much reduced. But I still don't know that that answers all the questions. I had some particular questions about the landing and about the day docks. As you may or may not know, the day docks fall under Safe Harbor's control at some point. So there's, there's one issue that would have to be negotiated. I think you do need a professional outside attorney to assist in any negotiations with this. I think basically you got to start with a net lease. You got to deliver the marina as is, where is. You know, the expenses have to be covered by the tenant. The town shouldn't bear any responsibility. Our community shouldn't bear any brains. So the process, we need to drop back, in my opinion. I think all of these ideas about forming the ad hoc committee and then the negotiating committee, those are all valid. But I don't like the process with the assumption that we necessarily must go with Safe Harbor to begin with. I think we need a professional facilitator where everyone can be involved. Council, literally every person, every person can be involved in the process, have their ideas developed, then reduced in a professional manner, which would be much better than just doing an online survey. Then we could have confidence about the overall direction, the vision for the marina in conjunction with our historic district and the downtown. So please, let's, let's try to consider that as a first step and then move forward. The lease, the lease can be managed, you know, renegotiation of a lease, whether it's Safe Harbor, whether it's some other party, a, a lease or a license, or perhaps the city should run it itself. I mean, who knows? There are all kinds of things that should be fleshed out and, and discussed. The size of the marina, the whole nine yards. So please, let's, let's adopt that as a, as a, as a first step in moving forward.
Please?
Good afternoon, Lisa Suntala, I'm representing Historic Buford Foundation at Joy Scott Street, and I live at... I don't wear it, no, I don't. I live on North Street. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this tonight at the work session. And also thank you for the session that was held Thursday night out at Pavilion. I do think that was an opportunity for votes to talk one-on-one with Safe Harbor and to share not only their vision and their comments and their worries, you know, and concerns about it, but to, to also throw in, you know, what other questions and concerns that they might have. And just as Mr. Trask said, there were a number of thoughts that were out there and conversations that were going on during that, that session. That did include the day dock. That did include also cruise ships up against the waterfront park. But and with the dock itself, you know, how far was it going to go out, you know, was the channel going to be impacted, and items like that. But I think the comprehensive direction that you're proposing tonight is the correct direction. But I think the, the way that it's framed is sort of what the, the discussion is. You know, how do we frame that direction to be able to involve and engage the community in something that is a major part of our community, the waterfront park, has for, you know, since the 1970s, been the focal point and the catalyst for the downtown and the revitalization efforts that came soon after with the downtown area. And as Paul noted as well, it's a part of our National Landmark Historic District and our historic district and connected to, and the funds that were used previously to build that park and to build the parking in the area, and I'm not sure if they went towards the marina or lot, but there were UDDAC funds that, that went towards that effort and other government funds that did have specific restrictions with regard to the use of the parking lot, the use of the park as a public entity. And I think for years, that has become our focal point in Buford, is that waterfront park. So moving forward, I do think that it's important to open it up as, as broadly as you can to encourage the citizens of Buford who take advantage of that waterfront park and take advantage of our downtown area and historic district to have a say in what's happening. And the only other point that I would bring up, which I did discuss with several of y'all on Thursday night, is making sure as you go through your negotiation process, both with a lease agreement as with the designs of this project that you're cognizant of, the federal rules and regulations with regard to... the federal rules and regulations with regard to section 106 and any federal dollars or permitting that is used, um, within an area that engages historic properties, a historic district, um, historic area, and that would be the marina, um, included such as just the same as it is our docks that are built within the downtown area. If any federal dollars or permitting are spent, the section 106 process of the National Preservation Act kicks in, which means that there has to be a, um, study that determines what the impacts, if any, there will be to, um, those historic properties in that historic area and, um, what mitigation would be necessary in order to make that project go forward or to not make that project go forward. So thank you, just wanted to leave you with that and we appreciate y'all going through this process.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Dan Sulka, Charles Ford Street in Pigeon Point. I appreciate the adding a few people into it because I've just started reading on this and I'm a little overwhelmed. And I've also had a really good, I think I got a good feel for the complexity of what's. And even just this preliminary draft process, I'm seeing lots of work and lots of steps. And so I think it's good to expand it because there's a lot of talent in this community, different levels of expertise. And so by adding citizen team members to this negotiating committee, ad hoc committee, whatever you want to call it, but I would not separate them at that point from negotiation. They could self-organize with, uh, with the attorneys and a lead negotiator, but they should be in the room because part of this is community input and community oversight, cosmetics, image, whatever. Whatever the council needs, the city needs to deal with the noise that's always in the background. It's, so I would not leave them out. I like Paul's idea on the fact that I think you should consider, so I kind of support his idea, that you take that step back and look at what are essentially, I've boiled it down to three major courses of action, retain the, retain the current contractor, vendor, recompete it, which I think is out of that middle area you had, or look at the possibility, how do you do a city-run marina? But I would take, I would tuck that right under the initial discussions, the development of those three options with the ad hoc committee. And I would include the lawyers which weren't on, he spoke the outside, I didn't, the city attorney, because you're dealing with something that's already in existence and a major million dollar plus corporation. Uh, so you want to make sure whichever way we go, we know the pitfalls of where we're going. So that, that's kind of my comment, I applaud the, the idea that we're looking at a process that's going to involve some citizens that are ready to roll up their sleeves and I think you'll need the help as they split up to take a look at different things. And one little other piece in the process, please, is have that committee help develop that survey, is that survey is their tool. So if you're going, you know, any one of these five citizens may have a bunch of other questions that, uh, they think they need to get in there to be able to leverage their expertise. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Just Wallace?
Yeah, I'm going to be extremely brief, I'll almost cover 1207 Bay Street. Um, I think if you read papers, and I don't believe everybody's reading paper, but there's been reported that waterfront park itself has extreme problems structurally. And we as a community are going to have to end up finding out what we're going to do with waterfront park. And in my mind, the waterfront park and the marina are one and the same. You can't separate the marina from the waterfront park. So if you're going to start planning to do something with the marina and you're leaving out what you're going to do with the waterfront park structurally, I think we're making a mistake in putting the cart before the horse. Until we shore up the waterfront park, until we make sure that is sound and can handle a marina. And I think some of our problem with a waterfront park was done by the cruise ships that are parking along a bulkhead that was never intended to have a 200 or 150-foot boat with jets pushing off underneath undermining a waterfront park. So I think some of the issue and some of the problem with that has happened. And until we shore up what happens there, I don't think we can move forward with marina. And I think possibly we can do the two together. Maybe we can come up with some kind of federal grant or program that will look at our downtown tourism attraction, which is the waterfront park. Without a doubt, that's what people come to do and come to see. And get money for the waterfront park, get money for the restoration of the, of a small marina. But let's, let's look at them both, not just one or the other. I think we'll make a mistake if we don't look at them both.
Who else? Have you got somebody?
Hi, Graham Trask, 1211 Bay Street. Um, first of all, um, this is a work session, yes, or because, um, Rob Cahill asked some questions that weren't answered. And I'm just wondering, are, are you guys going to answer his questions?
We can discuss them. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so here, I'll just repeat some of them. Um, Scott, you said in the last city council meeting that the lease with Safe Harbor, uh, is not valid. Is that, is that in fact your position?
That's my understanding, Mr. Trask, um, that it's not valid, that it's voluntary on, on both parties right now, it could remain in it.
It's, okay, so it's, it's voluntary, but it was not approved in a legal way.
It was, it was not approved in accordance with South Carolina law, that's correct.
Right, okay. So, so how, um, does that expose the city, um, itself to the last five years? Um, that Safe Harbor has been operating the marina? Under what authority were the, are they operating the agreement, just looking, uh, the marina? Have you guys thought about that?
No, not in terms of that direct question, I don't know if the other council members have thought about that. It's the, you know, the, the assumption for those five years was that it was a legal binding contract. However, as I remarked in one of the previous meetings, as a result of, uh, Paul Trask's FOIA, uh, we discovered that it was approved by a single vote of council, which is not how you convey property in South Carolina in a legal manner. And so I'm not really sure exactly how to answer your question, other than the assumption for those five years is that, uh, it was a valid agreement. And so I'm not, I'm not really sure how to answer the question on what was the exposure to the city during that time.
Okay. Um, so if, um, if there's no valid agreement, um, this, i- as others have expressed, this is a perfect time to take a step back, as it seems you're suggesting. But it sort of seems like we're kind of half-pregnant in a sense, where in some parts of your process, you suggest this is all about negotiating with Safe Harbor, but yet in your survey questions, it is taking this step back to see if, uh, citizens want the marina to be city-run, or it's a contract, or it's a lease. And so I'm just wondering where, where, what is this? Is it, is it in your head a renegotiation with Safe Harbor who doesn't have a lease? Um, or is it opening the funnel back up to the citizens to say exactly what they want with their marina?
That's a great question. Um, first of all, it's not what I want, it's what this council wants. And we've had this discussion with council previously. Uh, council has indicated a desire to, uh, negotiate with Safe Harbor, uh, which is why we approached them to see if they would be open to that. I would invite other council members, uh, council members to weigh in if they like. Uh, but that's, that's what we're operating on the assumption of right now.
Okay. Um, and does that potentially break the city's, uh, procurement process? If you just negotiate with one vendor? Because there's no, there's no lease.
Right, that, that, that's a, that's a, that's a very good question and it's one that probably we would need to seek, uh, some responses from our legal counsel on, so we will, we will pursue that.
Okay, um, I think that would be good. Um, just some other general questions, maybe for council, uh, Scott, and I appreciate your feedback. I mean, does anybody know who Safe Harbor's target market is, who their target clients are?
I have, yes.
Other, other than boaters?
I was going to say boaters, you know.
I mean, are they local boaters, are they out-of-town boaters, are they big rich boaters, are they small boaters? I mean, does anybody, because there's a lot of boaters out there, I was just wondering if council had given that any thought?
It would be a mix because I'm one of those boaters, I'm in their shed down in, in Port Royal.
Anybody help?
Well, I, this is, this is why I would assume, Graham, that, that it's a mix. I mean, I see boaters passing through on their way north or south who stop in there. I stopped in there to get, get the old B-buck that I, that I bought in their, in their house, uh, in the last storm. So I, I, I hadn't given it any thought until you asked the question, but I, I, and this would just be an assumption on my part, I think it's probably a mix.
Remember, I can't remember exactly what meeting it was, um, but I remember at one point they asked council, um, what percentage we would like to see in regards to long-term contracts and transient boaters? And we can't answer that question until we get the survey results from the community, in my opinion, because I think that's going to be the starting point of whether or not we're going to negotiate with Safe Harbor or have a city-run marina. And I think maybe you talked around this in one of your comments previously, Graham. Um, and I actually wrote it down as a note here. Um, but I'm wondering if, um, we should start with the survey instead of creating the ad hoc negotiating committee. And the thought with that is, is if we start with the survey, the survey is ultimately going to determine whether or not the general feelings from the community is to have a marina operation under contract or to have a city-run marina. And in my opinion, the committee that we stand up is probably going to be different if we're talking about a city-run marina or if we're talking about a contract with somebody who's going to manage a marina. Because your differences in experience from the members that make up that board are probably going to be different in each of those scenarios. So starting with the survey seems like the better course of action because then you'll know what the next step is going to be. I just haven't got to that comment yet because we haven't really made it around for, for council to discuss. But that's something that I wrote down and I think you were kind of talking, uh, or getting to that anyway.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think the survey is important. Um, I was, I'm wondering again methodologically, whether you pull together this committee and they come up with the survey with, um, the city staff's help, rather than the city rushing around trying to put out a survey that they think is appropriate, that would, that would be one comment. Um, but, but I, but I have a couple of other questions and I really, I really thank you for providing this feedback, which is really good. Um, what, what do you think Safe Harbor's goal is in renting that marina?
Obvious, it's make money.
Make money, right. Yep.
It's anybody's business, though.
Is it, is it the city's goal to make money?
No.
Okay. So that was my point, Neil, and thank you for making it. Um, so you've, you've got Safe Harbor who is leasing a, a city asset to make money. You've got a city who has an amenity who is not necessarily in the business of making money. So there's a, there's a conflict there of, of goals, which I think needs to be recognized. Are you guys? Sorry?
I'm sorry, I was going to say Safe Harbor is providing a service that the city would cost a fortune for the city to provide. So we're, we, you know, having them do it for us, basically, so we don't have to raise taxes to provide the service.
Do you mean Safe Harbor, it, you, the city couldn't do what Safe Harbor does?
No.
In your opinion, can, can anybody, could anybody, could any, is Safe Harbor the only person that could do that?
No, but the city's not in the marina business and, um, the city's not capable. We'd have to hire such a staff that it would not be economical, economically feasible.
Have you, have you done a, you've done an, an analysis of that, Neil?
I have not done a, um, in-depth analysis, I've kind of looked at some other, um, places and things, but no, I have not done an analysis.
Okay.
We are in the process of running those numbers to, to estimate what it would cost the city, we don't have those yet, however.
Oh, good, that's great, I think that's a, I think, sorry, go ahead, Scott.
We, we are looking at that.
I think that's a good analysis to go through.
Yeah. Um, Graham, may I, may I make a comment? Uh, I, I, I realize the city is not a, well, profit operation, but I would argue that, that the city is kind of in it to make money in a sense, too. I, I, I always assumed that the city looked at the marina as an asset that makes the city better, whether it's bringing in, you know, clients that would shop or do things or folks passing through that maybe just tie up there and never get off their boat. But I, I, it's been my assumption that while Safe Harbor is there primarily, that's, I mean, it's a business, that's what businesses try to do, make profit. But at the same time, we, I think should be looking at it as, um, I guess there are two ways to have more money. You can spend less or make more, and this ideally you get to do both. But I, I would argue that we're, in a sense, trying to save the citizens money. And I, I'm operating under the mindset that the assumption is, since the city is not, you know, does not have the expertise, and maybe we do, maybe all this information survey will reveal that. But I mean, your businesses tend to contract out things that others can do better for them. And that's why I thought that, you know, let's assume that the contract was valid and then we had gone through the ordinance process and everything was perfect. Then if we had Safe Harbor operating the marina, it would be because they provided an expertise at, at, at a cost point that was advantageous overall to the city. While at the same time, you know, they would be making a profit.
Right. No, I think what you're getting at, Neil, I mean Mitch, sorry, is a key question. Um, what, what is the overriding assumption about that marina? And, and let me just, if I may, and I know I'm taking a long time and I really do appreciate you giving me this time. What about the city tennis courts or, um, the basketball, um, operation, which is county, uh, uh, on Green Street or the parks? Are those to make money or are those an amenity for the citizens?
Um, Graham, the tennis courts are also part of the county, city gave those to the county.
Okay, but let, let's just take Southside Park. Is it to make money or is it an amenity? Um, and I think you guys need, and we all need to ask that question. Is the downtown marina an asset that the city is going to monetize? Or is it an amenity for the citizens for the benefit of the citizens? And it, and it, and it may be a combination of both, I don't, I don't have the answer. But I, I think it's a very, very important question from my standpoint to ask yourself. Because it seems Mitch is under one assumption, I may be under a different assumption. And I think it's an important question to ask because it will drive your strategy. Just a couple more questions, because I know you guys have limited time. Are you guys afraid of being, are, are you concerned that Safe Harbor might sue you if you don't go with them?
No.
No, okay, no, no fear there. Um, are you concerned that others might sue you if you do go with Safe Harbor?
No.
Rhetorical question. Rhetorical question, um, one last thing. Do the docks actually need to be replaced? Are they, are they, are they, um, deteriorating beyond repair? Someone in the audience mentioned that there were electoral, 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 sorry, electrical issues. Um, but do the docks actually need to be replaced?
Some of them may, and at some point in the future, you have to have a structural analysis, I don't know, I would imagine.
Okay.
They're, they're going to eventually need to be replaced.
Right, but, okay, Scott, do they need to be replaced right now, just out of curiosity?
I, I don't know if they need to be replaced right at this moment. I know they are aging. I'm not sure what the age of them is at this point. I don't think there have been any significant replacements in the last five to 10 years. And they are wooden, so they, they do deteriorate over time. The exact condition of them, I, I couldn't tell you right now.
Okay, but, but the, the redesign that Safe Harbor presented is, is something that they want to do. Because of their business model, correct?
You'd have to ask them why they want to do it. I, I know it's part of the initial agreement that they. Invest a certain amount of dollars into the lease in order to extend it another 10 years.
Okay, um, that was it. Thanks for allowing me the floor to, to go through those questions. I really appreciate it. And the answers, fabulous.
Absolutely. Anyone else have a comment? Somebody else? Maxie?
Yes, um, this is Maxine Ruths, eight eleven North Street, um. I think Graham has raised some really good questions about this whole process. And I also commend you all, counsel and Scott, for, um, answering honestly. Um, another thing, another question that I think should be asked is. Or surveyed, uh, would be the, um, response of boat, boaters. Who use marinas up and down the east coast and, you know. Do they have issues with Safe Harbor or do they prefer Safe Harbor marinas, um? I, I just think it's, um, important to know from people who, from transient boaters. Whether or not, um, what we do here is important to them. And I hope the survey would somehow include, um, those voices. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Beach?
Yeah.
You're up.
Uh, my name's Tyler Beach, I live at three ten Pedo Street. A lot of what Graham said was correct. I've worked with different cities across south and you subsidize everything. And you don't even know it. Um, you don't have somebody standing out there holding out their hand for seventy-five cents every time somebody walks into the park. But you pay somebody to mow that park, you pay somebody to land state that park, same with the recreation fields. You build a baseball diamond and people come and use it. Have a tournament, you might charge them something. But you subsidize things all the time and part of this marina may need to be subsidized at some point. You definitely need to have a, a line item where you save money every year to replace docks. You know you're going to spend that, just like fixing a car or anything else, um. I was gonna say, I'm here, I'll say, first of all, you talked about maybe hiring a professional marina consultant. To tell you how to do things and work a business plan for marinas. Um, Safe Harbor does not run Seapies, Harbor Town, Harbor Towns. World, no, I mean, and we've got more than Harbor Towns got, Lord, we got Buford. And I don't mind being called the most expensive marina on the east coast. If that makes it work. I mean, the business model ought to use whatever Harbor Town uses. Running the numbers and see, and I was with the firm that did the original part. If the marina won't work, okay, we don't have a marina anymore. I find that hard to believe. But if it doesn't work, we tried it for twenty, fifty years, okay, now we say the marina won't work. Well, let's just keep the walkway up there. I'm more worried about losing parking spaces in that parking lot. Because I don't want the parking lot to be a parking lot. I want the parking lot to be. Double the size of the waterfront park, which is what ought to happen. You shouldn't have a parking lot on waterfront park. You should have a public park on waterfront parks. I don't see Charleston putting parking spaces on their waterfront park, um. That blows my mind. The long vision of the waterfront park is to continue. The green space where the parking cars are now. You will have to have a road. An access to drop off some parking spaces to some number to get, so people can drive down. And access their boats and drop off things that go to the boat. There's got to be some kind of off-site parking. I mean, in nineteen eighty-four, there were, there were, in nineteen eighty-four, there were forty-four boat slips. I got a real photograph back there that I just counted and there's about eighty-two. In that area, like current area. I don't think it needs to be any bigger. I measured. Safe Harbor's new plan, they got a thousand millennial feet of additional boat docks. On their new plan. And I don't think that needs to happen. As nice as that new plan was, it was pretty, it was much better than the previous plan. But it's still a thousand millennial feet more docked space on that new plan. And like I said, eighty-four, there were forty-four boat slips. Today, there's probably eighty-two, eighty-four out there right now. If that's max, I don't want any more. I, I wouldn't change any of the, any of the, uh, boardwalks, walkers. I know they got replaced. They need to be replaced. That's part of the business plan, keeping money in there to replace things, just like you did for your house. Uh, like I said. The parking scares me more than that contract. And when I look at that contract. I don't think Safe Harbor got Bu- City of Buford in their best interest. Uh, and not at all. I think that contract says, I'm Safe Harbor and this is what we want, you know. We'll give you a little bit, but we, but they don't have their City of Buford in, in the best interest. Oh, like I said, and the fuel tanks, I don't know where the fuel tanks, I haven't been in any of those meetings. But it's critical, no, those future fuel tanks are going to go. I mean, because that's going to affect. The future park. And one thing that Mayor Rao did when he was in office is he hired one of the best. Waterfront park firms in the country, um, Sasaki and Associates out of Boston to do the schematic plan of the current. Waterfront park, a firm I worked with did the original part. Sasaki and Associates out of Boston did the updated. Um. Uh, schematic of the concept of the updated part, what ten, fifteen years ago, whatever that was, um. And why they hired a firm out of, out of Charlotte to do the construction documents, I don't know. But, um, Sasaki and Associates does waterfront parks all over the world. They would be a great person to come in here and tell you how to, you know, what the marina should be. I don't think it needs to be any more than what it is today. Um, and like I said, my concern, and I've said this at a couple of meetings, is to move the waterfront park into where the parking lot is. And the city should have been responsible for parking somewhere else in the city. There's acres of land for parking. Um, you go to different places, Somerville built a parking garage. Or levels out fifteen years ago, longer. You can't find it when you go to downtown Somerville, South Carolina. It was a toll gate. The city used the first two floors, the other two floors are used by the public. Today, they paid for the parking garage and then took all the gates down. It's just open to the public anytime you want to use it. They, they don't charge for parking. Um, but in North Carolina, I don't see any parking near Walmart parking lot. Everybody drives in parks. It's all made up into the cost of doing business, um. Again, the bottom line is, I don't want to purchase things in that, in where the parking lot is now. Ultimately, it should be a green space for the people of Buford. And that was the vision in nineteen seventy-four. But they only have a certain amount of money to spend. They have to stop where they can stop.
That face too, Sasaki?
Sasaki was to, that's a huge part, that's a huge part of our use. Which is going to be needed. I mean, Lord, it was nineteen seventy-six when the original one was done and people know about it all over the place. And, you know, come and say how great a beautiful waterfront park it is.
Do you remember the van shell there that was there and then it was all parked, that's all it was, the parking back then?
Yeah.
The whole thing's parking, so.
I just learned of that this weekend, um, um, Claire Howell told me.
That's where the water festival was, right there.
He said there was, right behind the gas station, there was a van shell and everybody's, that's where the water festival was. And, and that's what I would do. I did a, some schematics of what I would do. You put a van staying up in the higher part and we're looking down.
But no, it was a parking lot. They had, they converted the parking lot, their water festival into water festival.
Yeah.
But it was a parking lot the other fifty, um, one weeks of the year.
Yeah, well, it still needs to be a, a green space. Um, I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Uh, may I make one more, one more comment, please? Again, Paul Trash, six ten Blaine Street, speaking of business and individual. So, talking about, just a little bit about finances, so. In fiscal year twenty-three, I guess it's fiscal year, it might be calendar year. Uh, the dockage revenue was eight hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The store sales, net sales were eighty-five, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty. And they had fuel sales, and I don't know whether this is dollars or gallons, I'm not sure, I'm not. Anyway, the city, you know, called about a million bucks. It looks like it's on an upward trend. So, you know, there's probably a million dollars coming in, let's, let's not talk about gas, that's just docking Marina store. Now, the city is, was remitted during that fiscal year twenty-three, about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, okay? So, there's a, there's a lot of wiggle room there. There's a lot of money. So, I'm not so sure that the city needs to be overly concerned that there's not enough money. To properly operate or to have to operate the marina at a deficit. I don't, I don't know that that's really true. I, what, what, what has happened here over many decades? The Griffin family ran the marina for a long, long time. I mean, twenty, thirty odd years, maybe, maybe longer, I don't know. And so, that came to a conclusion, I think the city, uh, was, I think that Rick Griffin wanted to retire. He wanted to get out of the marina. The city was happy for him to go perhaps. And so, Safe Harbor came along and that seemed like the, the choice. The, the, the committee that was established with Mr. Sutton and Mr. Verity and so forth recommended Safe Harbor. And as a matter of fact, I think it was just Griffin and Safe Harbor were the only two, if I recall correctly. But the point is this, never once in all these decades have the citizens actually. Said during the growth from the time that the marina was really small, then it got bigger under the Griffins. And then it got even bigger again, a little bit under Safe Harbor, okay? Never once during all this time have the citizens of Buford, and I'm talking about at large, every neighborhood. Has anyone ever gotten together, because there are a lot of pleasure boaters out there. I'm one of them. I, I love to be able to go to the marina, but I don't want to keep it in the water all the time. But maybe there's some other rules, perhaps, if it was a, you know, certainly the day dock needs to be under municipal control, it seems to me. So, but anyway, a lot, a lot to talk about. Again, I want to ask you sincerely, this is important. This is a big issue for the community. It's got a lot of legalities, it's got a lot of regulatory issues, it involves the historic district, it involves the entire community. This is the time to have a professional planning charrette, invite the citizens in. Get them input, formulate a strategy that everyone can move forward with. And if that strategy then, uh, says, well, you need to have a licensed or a contractor or a leased operator. Then that needs to go through the legalities, which includes approval under the nineteen seventy-six agreement. And needs a proper lease agreement and so on and so forth. So, that's really the first step. Please consider that. That's where we need to go. Thank you.
Second by the, real quick, real quick, real quick, I'm still Russ Cane Gill, six oh eight Water Street. I want to really echo and reinforce with, I just heard Paul say, I was at the meeting, but in the, uh, pavilion last week. And thanks again for, for hosting that. A guy is really smart, like a C-level job in corporate America. I asked him, I said, what brings you here? I just want to make sure I can preserve my spot. And I think, whoa, what a largess comment that is. I said, is that in the public interest? And his snarky response was, I'm the public, and so I think your invitation here is to do what's in the public interest. And it's not apparent that anybody knows what's in the public interest of Buford, not Safe Harbor. And the charrette's a remarkable idea, has a great history, done professionally by a facilitator that knows how to bring this here, so, thank you.
Anyone else for a second, Oliver? This is Graham.
Graham, thirteen hundred, I'm on the block. This is really fast, but just to kind of get a broader thing. I'm very concerned in terms of the issue of what an asset is and what happens with that asset. Because I'm, from my business background, if you have an asset, it ends up getting depreciated. You figure out what's the length, the likely length of it, and then what's going to be the replacement cost. And you depreciate it by year and you set aside money for replacement. And we just had, I don't mean to, um, say something embarrassing to the city manager. But he didn't know how old the docks were and, and really what condition they were in. And so, we really need to look at broadly, what do we consider our assets to be in Buford? And what are we doing about their long-term upkeep? I mean, it's, it's horribly scary when we think about what it's going to cost to fix the waterfront park problem. And there should have been, whether or not there was enough money set aside, there should have been money being set aside every year. Because everybody knew that it was supposed to last roughly fifty years, and you're going to have a problem. So, just as we started thinking, because one of the issues here is, do we want to maybe take over the marina? And we've got to figure out, how long is each part of that marina likely to ask, uh, to last? And appreciate it instead of having replacement money, but broadly in terms of all of our assets, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes. Maybe we hear from Ms. Kim first. Just raise your hand about the same time I.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, um, am I on? Yeah, that, this is Kim McFann, and I'm speaking, um, as a member of the public, not as a member of the planning commission. And I'm listening to everybody talking and I think a lot of really good questions have been asked and, uh, some good suggestions. But I want to address, uh, the topic of this was a path forward to address the issue of the marina. And, uh, I just want to say that I think it's a little bit premature to talk about appointing a negotiating committee. And also a little bit, you know, possibly a little bit of a misconception of the problem. When you're talking about, let's get all these people involved in negotiating, because I don't know that negotiating is the problem. I, I think that a logical approach to this situation is, first of all. The council needs to do something about the marina. So, you, the council needs to figure out what the council's position is. Uh, gathering information, I think is very important for that, whether it's surveys, a citizen referendum, uh. Consulting experts, whatever, whatever it takes. Um, I think that information gathering process should take place and the council should come up with whatever their position is. Based on that information gathering process. At that point, you can send in your negotiators to negotiate. Either with Safe Harbor or anybody else you might decide that you want to be negotiating with. or anybody else you might decide that you want to be negotiating with, because the scope of the information gathering uh, might expand this. I mean, the, the question's been asked repeatedly, is, is, is Safe Harbor the only option? Or do we want some other options, including the city trying to run it itself? So, to me, staff, city attorney are probably just fine for negotiating. Um, I don't think you need a huge committee to accomplish negotiating. I think what you need is a position on behalf of the council that is informed by public opinion and anything else the council feels they need, and marching orders for negotiators, whether it's with Safe Harbor or anybody else. And thank you for listening to me. Um, this may be just a repeat of what a lot of other people have said, but to me, it's, it's simple. There's a logical way to approach this, and you have the resources to do it.
Ms. McFann, can you go through your address for the record?
Oh, yeah, seven oh nine King Street in Beaufort.
Right. Um, okay, so, taking all of what we just heard into consideration and the blueprint that you've laid out here, I'm gonna try to outline what my position is in involvement. All right, so for the ad hoc negotiating committee, you had one representative from city council. If I had my way, I would make that two. And then, um, there you, uh, brought up appointing, um, council representatives. So, under, um, bullet point four, Scott, you have two council-appointed representatives. I would change that to three, and it would be basically citizen representatives that were appointed by the three other members of council that weren't on, uh, that weren't one of the two representatives on there. Okay? Um, I, I see value in having a historic review board designate on that board. Um, and then I see value in one representative from Beaufort County Council. I would also add, from feedback that we've got tonight, adding a contract attorney. Um, I can see how he could be or she could be ex officio, but there to make sure that anything that's discussed is within bounds. Um, that would bring your total negotiating body to seven members. Um, and then you highlighted here, uh, having both residents and non-residents of the city of Beaufort tabulated separately through a survey. I think that's a good idea to get a good understanding of what, um, not just the citizens of Beaufort, but anybody that visits, um, would, would want to say in regards to the survey. Uh, under your method of survey, uh, I would add the in-person meetings that the constituents brought up tonight. Um, and that could include a professional facilitator that obviously had an experience in setting up that, those charrettes. Um, and then at that in-person meeting, we could have the ability, whether it was through a QR code they could scan or a paper survey, you know, or maybe even both, to where, uh, anybody that took part in that charrette, however they felt comfortable, they could also present a survey as well. Um, and then I think that would give us a general idea of whether or not we're gonna have a contracting marina operation or if it's gonna be city-run. So, whether or not we stand up the negotiating committee before or after that, I think it's very imperative for us to understand what the community wants, whether it's a city-run marina or just an asset that the community can use, um, uh, or contracting it out. I see that you, uh, pointed out here for, uh, reasonable expectations associated with being city-run, um, each increasing city staff size, revenue required to make periodic investments in the infrastructure, et cetera. I think that's something that probably was missed before. There really wasn't an analysis done to see what the long-term liabilities are, not even for our responsibilities in regards to the past lease, right? So, here we're making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year-ish, and yes, that's trending upward, but within the first five years of the lease, we have to spend a million dollars on replacing the, the fuel tanks. We've got to maybe potentially do something with the parking lot, um, rebuild the, the buildings on site. So, I don't even know that there was an analysis done to determine what the long-term liabilities were gonna be, and I think you've kind of captured that here. So, understanding what the city's periodic investments are in that infrastructure, uh, I think is gonna be extremely important. And then, it looks like the response, some of the responsibilities of this committee are to review the current lease, the survey results, and establish a meeting schedule. Um, the ad hoc negotiating committee establishes the initial negotiation positions in preparation for discussions with Safe Harbor. And of course, all of that is assuming that the survey results in a favorable position from the community in regards to contracting that out. Maybe it doesn't. So, um, I would, obviously, all of this would take into consideration, um, the federal rules, as Ms. Lee pointed out. And then, uh, I think it was Mr. Trash that pointed out the, uh, nineteen seventy-six agreement. So, I think the, the intent here is to absolutely abide by any regulations, um, and, and do this legally. So, I think all of those boxes, i- in my mind at least, are checked, or the intention is to check that. I, I do think that the question in regards to procurement was a very valid question, so maybe that's step one, is to figure out, um, if, if it jeopardizes our procurement process to just work with Safe Harbor. Um, that would let us know if we're gonna have to send this thing out or not. So, overall, I'd have two representatives from city council, um, and then three citizen representatives appointed by the other three members of council, and have a seven-member body, and then add to your, uh, methods of survey, the in-person surveys with a facilitator involved.
I think the clarification on the committee, they have again.
Yes, so. So, it'd be two city council representatives, one historic review board designate, one representative from Beaufort County Council, and then three council-appointed citizen representatives, and then add the contract attorney as an ex officio number, ex officio member. And then if you did that, you'd have a seven-member body. Right?
So, question on the three council-appointed representatives. Does that mean each of the remaining council members gets to make one appointment all by themselves, or is that they make three appointments as a group voting?
I, I'm not married to either option, but I would think that maybe one appointment from each council representative makes sense.
Okay.
So, then each one would get to choose, and it would be the three that weren't a part of the negotiating committee that would have the opportunity to appoint a citizen.
Okay. This is just my gentleman.
Oh, yeah, I can do that. Uh, I, I want to go back to, uh, a, a comment that Graham made about whether the marina would be, should be considered an asset of the city or a remedy. Um, and I think maybe Paul, uh, forgive me if I run off, but someone talked about, you know, whether marina could, we could accept a deficit in operations of the marina. So, I, I think that we we are no extent to make sure that we're not operating the marina at a deficit. The reason I say that is because if we operate the marina at a deficit, that deficit has to come from somewhere. And since the marina, really, from a benefit perspective, benefits a very small segment of the city's population, those who have boats, basically. Then, that would pass on a burden to the other citizens tax-wise, for something they're never gonna take advantage of. So, however we do this, whether it's contract or operating ourselves, just keep in mind that, you know, as long as I'm blessed to be on council, I would always, I will always oppose uh, passing that expense for that deficit on to the general citizenship. As far as the makeup of the, uh, the citizen committee, you know, as than the ad hoc committee, um, I, I see benefit of having a committee. Somehow, we have to make sure, I think, that we, we get input from the citizens, that that opportunity is there, so that we can get that input, because I think quite of that is how we got in this mess. And if we were all in this mess, if we were all to blame, it'd probably be a different compensation, because we would have had the input of everybody, right? But, uh, you know, I think to know that was intent, that, that didn't happen. So, I, I would like, I like the idea, uh, that Phil brought forth of, of having this citizen committee as the starting point. Um, and I like the idea of one, each council member having one representative on, on that committee. And then, you know, that committee, uh, uh, is probably, you know, going on simultaneously with the survey. How, how we, how, how we get the survey, because, uh, it was mentioned earlier that, you know, um, taking a survey is like, if you want a certain answer or ask the right question, the person doesn't even know, you know, that they're asking in a way they may not have intended to. So, maybe some professional help on make sure the survey questions are asked, uh, in a way that we get objective results, is, is important. And then how, how we do the actual negotiating team that gives the, they get together with Safe Harbor. I, uh, you know, the ideas that have been put forward, I could, I could live with either of those, but I, I think the, 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 getting that input by having a representative that hopefully will, you know, be active and out as a community, talking to, talking to the citizens, um, to give good feedback is, is important.
Can I pass one thing? Sure. So, and this is, I guess, her, Bear and Councilman Mitchell. Um, so, just trying to think about the responsibilities for that additional, uh, citizen body. Um, so outline here is basically the ad hoc negotiating committee would organize, review the current lease, review the survey results, and establish a schedule, um, negotiate, or they would establish the initial negotiation positions. So, um, we are getting community feedback through the survey, but if we were to stand up that council-appointed citizen body, maybe, um, and I'll just throw this out there to see if this is kind of where you guys are thinking, but are your thoughts that this body could, with professional assistance, maybe, generate the survey? So, basically, their job or their responsibility in all of this would be to work with some professional consultant to establish what that survey looks like before it's released? And then from there, you would have your ad hoc negotiating committee take over? Is that kind of the thought?
Yeah, uh, for, you know, that's what I'm thinking anyway, because, uh, you know, they'll be getting the feedback hopefully from the community and to make sure that those, those concerns from the community is part of the survey.
So then, so then tying in, if that's the case, then tying in a comment that we heard from one of the citizens that spoke, basically, three of those members, the three that were appointed from the three council members that were not involved in the ad hoc committee, those three representatives could carry over to the ad hoc negotiating committee to keep continuity between the two, right?
Yeah, I like that.
Well, um, I kind of like most of what you said, as far as the makeup of the committee. Eventually, this is going to council, and we're gonna have the final say. So, I would like the idea of a council representative, uh, from the public being a, we don't like it, we don't have to approve it, you know, what, what comes before us in the ultimate end. I think we need to let the citizens have more say by having each of us appointed citizen to represent us.
Is that on your ad hoc or the other one?
That would be on the ad hoc. And they, they would represent, have the five representatives. I like that idea. It'd feel bad. Of, have somebody represent each one of us at that point. Um, as it goes forward to the negotiating committee, it would be, um, Scott, JJ, um, attorney, one council member, and who was the other one we said? Wouldn't that be the my face, are we, or?
Yeah, that's what's on there now.
Okay. Okay, so, um, have that as, um, I like that makeup better. Um, as far as the park or the, excuse me, as far as the marina, yes, it is an asset. Uh, you talk to the merchants downtown, they'll tell you how much business comes from it. A lot of Graham's property would probably end up being empty if we didn't have all this. It doesn't produce a lot of income. A lot of people have moved here as a result of coming here through the park. I talked to three people today. I was at, I was still getting blood taken. Person sat right next to me, said they moved here because of the park, or because of the marina. They came here by there, and they couldn't leave. I've heard that time and time again. So, um, it is definitely an asset, um, to the merchants downtown. You have to look farther than just what the marina brings in. You have to look at the money that comes in, otherwise, what the people are spending, they come here, the transients, they do spend. Um, as far as the charrette, uh, yes, I do think that would be a good idea.
That's special.
Yeah. Yes. But we would, uh, we'd want to make it fat, you know, something like, um, not where we're rushing people, but I would like it speedy process. That's pretty much it.
Okay, my, my thoughts on this, uh, I, I kind of like the idea of maybe having a professional planning charrette. Get the feedback, uh, from the citizens. I think that's important. We need to do a very good survey instrument. Uh, I think that's, that's critical. But one thing I want to throw into this as well is, is an option. Let's talk about the city taking it over. Well, there's another option. City could, if we did, uh, let's say that the lease of Safe Harbor is invalid, we end up taking it over. If we contract out with a saltwater marina operator, pay them a flat fee, whatever it is. If we're grossing over a million dollars from mooring fees and slip fees, pay them half a million, six hundred thousand, whatever it is to operate. The remaining money, that's five, six hundred thousand dollars, can go into an enterprise fund set up for the marina. And if, and when time comes and these docks need to be replaced, we can always issue revenue bonds, and the money to pay those revenue bonds off can come out of that enterprise fund. So, that's an option I want to throw on the table as another option to do this, rather than the city running. I mean, government does some things well, but I don't think running marina is one of them. So, I'm just gonna throw that out there.
So, I think it's a good idea. So, what, would you, would you add that to the list of options for the citizens to determine through the survey? Is that a good, right? Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We've got a lot of. Does that give you? I'm trying to boil them down right now.
Right.
So, I, I, I think that we have something to work with, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over a little bit of it with you, be sure I heard you.
Okay.
Um, so, I, I'm definitely hearing consensus on a planning charrette in addition to a survey. Uh, I'm hearing that we need to be sure that our surveying instrument is objective and valid, and, and in doing it, in order to do that, we may need some professional outsourcing assistance in that. And that, that instrument and the planning charrette should also have impact from the ad hoc, really, given this player, whose membership is still not crystal clear right now, but we can, as we go forward, but I've got everybody's still captured here. Um, we're gonna continue to, and Alan's already started the process of exploring the financial impact of the city, Graham Arena. So, there is, there'll be some ocean of data to work with, uh, when considering that scenario. Okay. That's what I have so far. Did I miss anything that's integral to the discussion given that? And also I have the question that we need to settle about.
Right, I was just, you can bring that up again.
Mr. Trash asked a very valid question. I think we, we need to get to, we need that response in writing, uh, from, from an attorney, on what the position is there. So, um, so those are the thing, those are my takeaways.
The first thing we're doing is putting together the citizens committee, right? Where each, each, each of us appoints a person.
If the responsibility is for them to have, uh, a hand in delivering or, uh, creating the survey, then yes.
Yeah.
And so, and we can talk about that too, because, um, I, I think it's gonna be important that we do our best, and I'm not sure exactly the best way to do this, but to engage the entire city. So, we have a lot of neighborhoods that, um, maybe would miss the survey or the invitation for a charrette. So, I'm not sure if that is done through the makeup of those appointments, like making sure that we're appointing different people across the city that to then go back to their neighborhood and make sure that they're, um, working with, uh, their neighbors to discuss the fact that we're having a survey, that we're having a charrette. that we're having a charrette, this is some of the information that, you know, our neighborhood thinks is important to be on that survey. So maybe we take that into consideration too, just making sure that those council-appointed representatives are coming from a diverse region in our, in our community, to make sure that we're representing and engaging the city.
You know, maybe this is something, maybe, maybe those appointees come out of the neighborhood association.
That's right, where my head is, sir.
That's a good idea. Yeah, very robust, that's a good idea.
Yeah, maybe come out of the neighborhood association, and if there is an area that's not represented by a neighborhood association. Kay, you have any thought on that, thoughts for me?
Sorry.
I, I was, I was just thinking, you know, we want to make sure that this, this, but this, this citizens team that we're putting together have representation citywide. And I was just thinking that, well, maybe that each neighborhood association should, should, should have a representative on that team. Assuming that all the neighborhoods, you know, have, have a, an organization that they can pull someone from for that purpose.
We don't have.
We don't have.
Certainly, there are neighborhoods who would want to participate, be glad to participate. But I think there's something like twenty-one neighborhoods and maybe half a dozen neighborhood or formal neighborhood associations. So I don't think you can count on that bench.
I think I'm going to learn out there. We do a pretty good job of getting the word out.
If I could make a suggestion.
Absolutely.
Neighborhood associations are invaluable sources. They, they get our information out to everyone. I think utilizing the neighborhood association is more appropriate for getting the survey, getting the information about if we're going to do a charrette, getting the people to the seats, getting the people to respond. And that would, that would achieve the purpose of getting involved in the association.
If we have something to drop off at a house, I'll go door to door.
It'd be a little harder.
Now we can split up.
It's still hard.
Anything else? Comments?
You got enough, Scott?
I got enough to get started to, to, to.
Reach out for Tracy.
Tracy, some of these things will come back to you, but you have a more solid plan.
Glad you have that. Well, we have a meeting in about twenty-five minutes, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this. If you're good, come back at seven and stay with us for a couple more hours.